Good morning. Good morning, we're gonna start now. Hello, hello. We're gonna start now. Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Deputy. Thank you. Good morning, we're gonna start, we're running real late. This is the Committee of the Hold of City Council Philadelphia. Today the Committee will have testimony of the appointments to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board and the Philadelphia Housing Authority Board. This hearing is called order, I recognize the President of the Quorum of the Committee. This is the public hearing on the Committee to Hold, the purpose of this public hearing is to take testimony on Resolutions 140984, 140985, 140986, 140987, 140988 and 150016. Mr. Christmas, please read the titles of the resolutions.
Resolution 140984, approving the appointment of Nancy Winkler to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution 140985, approving the appointment of Bernard Brumwasser to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution 140986, approving the appointment of Sunny Popowski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution 140987, approving the appointment of Lee Huang to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution 140988, approving the appointment of Mike Chapman to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and finally, Resolution 150016, approving the appointment of Amy L. Curlin to be a member of the Philadelphia Housing Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. The first witnesses testify, these resolutions are Nancy Winkler, Bernard Brumwasser, Sunny Popowski and Lee Huang. Please come forth. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you have any testimony, you will be asked to please do so, or if you, your preference is to have your testimony submitted to the record, it's your choice. Right now, before you testify, to state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Who do you want to?
Ms. Winkler.
Okay, I'll go first, thank you, Council President Clark. Thank you, Council President Clark and members of council for the invitation to provide testimony on Resolution 140984. My name is Nancy Winkler and I am pleased to be nominated to serve on Philadelphia's first water rate board. Thank you very mu-- and storm water. Thank you very much for considering my nomination. I'm a resident of Philadelphia and a customer of the Water Department. I'm a municipal finance and budget professional. I've worked in the field of municipal finance since 1982. Currently, I am the Treasurer of the City of Philadelphia. In that capacity, I am responsible, among other matters, for the financing of the capital programs for the city general fund-supported infrastructure investments, including general obligation bonds and city-supported debt issued by, paid for economic development projects the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for various city facilities and the Redevelopment Authority for redevelopment projects. In addition, I oversee and manage debt issuance by the Philadelphia Gas Works, Philadelphia Airport and the City of Philadelphia Water Department. Prior to joining the city, I worked for over 28 years at public financial management as an independent financial advisor to state and local governments. My final role at PFM was to manage for over a decade the firm's New York office and practice. At PFM, I worked in over 20 different states for a wide variety of different municipalities and authorities, including many revenue bond-supported issuers. I have prior experience with the water sector, serving as financial advisor to several water and sewer clients, including the Nassau County Sewer and Stormwater Finance Authority and the St. Louis Metropolitan Sewage Authority. In my role as city treasurer, I've had the opportunity to learn a great deal about the Water Department's capital program, debt structure, credit quality and general finances. The Water Department serves an essential, critical function to provide drinking water, sewage treatment and storm water management for the residents, employees and businesses of the City of Philadelphia, which is the fifth-largest city in the country. The city is the single largest customer of the Water Department. The department must meet complex environmental requirements, manage a multi-billion dollar, multi-year capital program, and importantly, it must provide these services in an affordable manner to its customers. The city has a large population in poverty or with low income, which further challenges the Water Department. I understand that any member of the Philadelphia Water Rate Board must be able and willing to donate a substantial amount of time to consider these and other complex factors, all of which impact the city's water rates. I am prepared to do that work. I believe I have a sound background of knowledge about the city's Water Department. In the past four years as city treasurer, I've worked on three water new money financings and three water refundings for savings transactions, as well as letter of credit renewals. While this gives me a sound base, I do appreciate the additional work necessary to evaluate the details of cost of service and the rate structure and to consider all stakeholders. As a resident of the city, I believe I can contribute to this process and to the work of the other members of the Water Rate Board in a positive and constructive manner. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Please.
Thank you, Council President Clark, members of City Council. My name is Sunny Popowski. It's my honor to appear before this council pursuant to your resolution as a nominee to serve on the newly-created Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board. Under the ordinance establishing the new board, all five members must be residents of the city and have a minimum of five years of professional experience in relevant areas. In addition, under the ordinance, at least one member of the board, quote, "shall have experience as a consumer advocate in utility rate cases." I am a resident of the University City Neighborhood of West Philadelphia and I have more than 30 years of experience working on matters involving the regulation of public utilities, including serving from 1990 to 2012 as the consumer advocate of Pennsylvania. As the consumer advocate and previously as an assistant consumer advocate from 1979, my job was to represent Pennsylvania consumers in matters involving the regulation of their utility service. My representation was primarily before the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission, but I also successfully argued cases on behalf of Pennsylvania consumers in matters before the Commonwealth Court, the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania and the United States Supreme Court. After retiring from my position in Harrisburg, I returned to Philadelphia where I had attended the University of Pennsylvania Law School and begun my legal career with the law firm of Pepper Hamilton and Sheets. Since retirement, I've been a member, I've joined a number of government and nonprofit boards, including the, that deal with utility issues, including the United States Secretary of Energy's Electricity Advisory Committee, the Electric Power Research Institute, and here in Philadelphia, the Energy Coordinating Agency. I'd be extremely pleased to draw on my many years of experience in utility regulation to serve on the new Philadelphia Water Rate Board. There's no question that water and wastewater service is essential to the health and prosperity of all Philadelphia residents and businesses. Because this is a necessary service, and because it is not the type of service that lends itself to competitive market forces, the prices charged for public water and wastewater services must be regulated in a way that is reasonable and affordable for all consumers. That is true whether the service is provided by investor-owned utilities that are regulated by the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission or by a municipally-owned utility such as the Philadelphia Water Department. Now while the prices for water and wastewater services must be reasonable and affordable, it is also necessary for the rates to be sufficient to ensure that the safety and quality of our water are maintained to the strictest standards suitable for all household purposes and that the city's sewer and storm water systems are operated in a sustainable manner. The job of the Water Rate Board or any regulatory organization is to try to ensure that rates are set in a manner that is sufficient to provide the quality of service that consumers need at prices that they can reasonably afford. I believe that the new Philadelphia Rate Board can serve an important function in helping to ensure the economic and physical health of the City of Philadelphia, and I'd be honored to contribute to that service by becoming a member of the board. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony.
Council President Clark, other members of council, thank you for the invitation to provide testimony on Resolution 140987. My name is Lee Huang, and I'm pleased to be nominated to serve on Philadelphia's first Water Rate Board. I'm a Senior Vice President and Principal of E-Consult Solutions Incorporated, a Philadelphia-based economic consulting firm. In that capacity, I've led engagements in and for the city of Philadelphia on such topics as tax reform, commercial corridors, MBE and WBE utilization in city contracts and equitable distribution of home lending and business lending by the city's authorized depository banks. I also teach a graduate-level course called Quantitative Tools for Consulting at the Fels Institute of Government of the University of Pennsylvania. I also serve on the boards or advisory boards of Asian American Chamber of Commerce of Greater Philadelphia, Community Design Collaborative, PHL Diversity, Spruce Hill Community Association, Sustainable Business Network of Greater Philadelphia and Welcoming Center for New Pennsylvanians. I earned a Master in Public Administration degree from the Fels Institute of Government of the University of Pennsylvania with certificates in public finance and economic development. I earned a Bachelor of Science degree from the Wharton School of Business of the University of Pennsylvania with dual concentration in accounting and management. I'm delighted to bring these professional perspectives to the Water Rate Board. I always strive to look at things in a fair, analytical and informed manner, and I'm eager to serve the city in this way. Thank you again for this opportunity, I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, President Clark and members of City Council.
Good morning.
My name is Bernard Brumwasser, and I am a former city employee who worked for the Water Department for 40 years and was Water Commissioner toward the end of my career. It is my honor again to, to address you nearly four years since my retirement from city service in 2011. I've always been blessed to have an excellent relationship with members of this council, past and present, and look forward to continued, continued strong relationship. I'm also very grateful to Mayor Nutter for nominating me for this new rate board that was authorized by the voters. As many of you know, I was the Water Commissioner from 2004 to 2011. This was the culmination of my wonderful 40-year career with the Philadelphia Water Department that began in 1970. I have been a proud Philadelphian since 1951, when my parents and I immigrated to the U.S. from Europe. I was educated in the Philadelphia public school system and was graduated from Northeast High School in 1966. During my senior year at Penn State University, I was tested and recruited by the city's Personnel Department for the position of Management Trainee. Subsequently, I was hired by the Water Department after graduation. My career began in the old Water Pollution Control Division, preparing and monitoring its budget, staffing, preparing staffing requests, personal services reports, requisitioning and other administrative work. In 1983, after several promotions, I was recruited from the Operations Division to the Finance Division to manage the department's budgeting, ratemaking, accounting, auditing and capital financing work. By 1989, I was a General Manager of the Finance Division, and in 1999, I was appointed Deputy Water Commissioner for Finance and Administration. With a strong support of this legislative body, the Finance Division saved more than $100 million in net present value savings, $100 million in debt service payments, as we systematically refinanced most of the department's pre-1993 bonds at much lower rates of interest. Combined with the department's huge operational cost savings during that same period, water rates were stabilized and the department's national reputation regained its luster. I was first appointed Water Commissioner in 2004 and was reappointed in 2008. During that period, I rendered two Commissioners' rate determinations under the regulations in force at that time. As this brief history of my career shows, I was intimately involved in the Water Department's financial history for many years, beginning with the budget preparation in the 1970s, followed by rate case preparation and oversight, accounting management and capital financing by the mid-1980s. And during the city's financial crisis of 1990 and 1991, when all the city credits were downgraded to junk bond status, I also became the department's prime contact with the three Wall Street bond rating agencies. The Water Fund was the first city credit that re-entered the bond market in June 1991 and succeeded in receiving investment-grade bond ratings. This was the beginning of a long and steady rise in the credit ratings of Philadelphia's water and wastewater revenue bonds. The Water Department achieved its highest bond ratings ever by the end of the last decade. Beginning in 1991, I prepared and sent quarterly financial reports to all three bond rating agencies while addressing all their specific concerns. The Water Department built trust on Wall Street by consistently outperforming our financial projections and by always being painfully honest with the rating agencies, bond insurers and the investment community. A strong bond rating is particularly important to a water, wastewater and storm water utility like our own because we have an immense capital infrastructure investment whose replacement value is in the tens of billions of dollars. The utility must constantly replace and maintain this enormous investment by selling its revenue bonds to sophisticated purchasers who have many other investment options in the bond marketplace. All of our citizens should remember that a considerable amount of Water Department's spending is a direct result of unfunded federal and state mandates for drinking water purity, storm water runoff, wastewater treatment, effluent quality and other standards. Beginning with the Clean Water Act of 1972, water, sewer and storm water utilities, public and private have had to deal with ever-more stringent rules and regulations coming out of Washington. For better or worse, this has forced these utilities to propose and pass frequent and larger rate increases upon their customers. Although this resulted in a remarkable improvement in our river and stream environments, it also increased the burden on the pockets of ratepayers. One major challenge the Water Department faces, like many other similar utilities across the nation, is finding a way to meet all current and future federal regulations while keeping the cost of water affordable for as many customers as possible. This will not get any easier in the years to come. The Water Department has done an excellent job over the past 20 years in finding significant cost savings and efficiencies in the way it operates. However, it is essential that additional ways to save operating costs emerge in the future. The Water Department must also work more closely with the city, the Water Revenue Bureau and appropriate consumer representatives to build new strategies to help those customers who live at or below the poverty line. Since more than one-quarter of our fellow citizens fall into this category, it is essential that additional means of private and government assistance be found for them. Finally, I must close by saying that over the past 20 years, the Philadelphia Water Department has been considered one of the very best utilities of its kind in the nation, thanks in large part to the strong support and cooperation of this council. Philadelphians deserve the best, so it is incumbent for the new Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board to help keep the Water Department on top while being mindful of its customers' ability to pay. That concludes my formal testimony, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions of these witnesses, both members of the committee? There being none, thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else interested in testifying on this particular resolution? Morning, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Council President and members of City Council. My name is Robert Ballinger. I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services in the Energy Unit where I focus on utility matters. I recently served as counsel in my firm's role in the Water Department's most recent 2012 rate case where we served as public advocate. That case settled in late 2012. Water Department rates are a matter of significant concern for residential water and sewer customers who we serve as public advocate. Approximately half of those customers struggle to afford utility service and other fundamental necessities of life. I submitted written testimony on Resolution 140984 concerning the appointment of the City Treasurer Nancy Winkler to the board that will oversee new water, sewer and storm water rates. I urge this committee to vote no on that resolution. While I'm here to speak primarily about that filed testimony in opposition to the appointment of the City Treasurer to the Water Rate Board, I'd like to briefly voice my strong support for the appointment of Mr. Sunny Popowski to the Water Rate Board. That's Resolution 140986. Mr. Popowski's decades of experience fighting for utility customers as Pennsylvania's consumer advocate have benefited all Philadelphians served by PGW and PICO. I'm confident his service on the Water Rate Board will be meaningful, and he's a vital member of that board. I urge the committee to vote yes to Mr. Popowski's nomination. My written testimony explains the legal basis for my conclusion that the City Treasurer's service on the Water Board would violate fundamental principles of due process. Council correctly recognized and included in its own ordinance establishing this Water Rate Board that the board must be independent, reaching its own conclusions about rates and issuing appealable decisions. Unlike the process that has been in place for many years where the Water Commissioner has the last word in setting PWD rates, the new board will be required to comply with due process under Pennsylvania law. Among those due process requirements, a fundamental and important requirement is that decision-makers be impartial and free from conflict. The City Treasurer, by virtue of her position, cannot be expected to make decisions that are incompatible with her post and in contravention of the goals of the administration, and this conflict is inherent in the City Treasurer's function. It is irreconcilable.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
Folks, we're conducting hearings here, I ask you all to please keep your voices down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, I appreciate that. As I was saying, the conflict is inherent in the City Treasurer's function, it's irreconcilable. There's no way that the Treasurer can function as an impartial member of this board given her responsibility over PWD finances, including the bonds it sells to finance capital work, which are backed by customer rates, the rates that will be set by this board. As my testimony goes into briefly, I think it's helpful to think about due process in the same way for all utility customers, and I try to do that by analogy in my testimony. I think it demonstrates how unfair it would be to Water Department customers to have the City Treasurer participate in setting rates. So if we imagine the Chief Financial Officer of Exelon Corporation being appointed to the PUC to oversee the establishment of PICO rates, that's roughly an apt analogy for what's happening with the nomination of the City Treasurer. It would not be possible for Exelon CFO, who has a fiduciary duty to the shareholders of PICO's parent, to put aside her professional responsibility. And I don't think customers would want that person to be in charge of setting the higher rates that they would have to pay, which ultimately could be motivated by that same fiduciary obligation towards shareholders. Pennsylvania due process should protect us from that circumstance because it requires impartiality, and not just actual impartiality, but the appearance of impartiality. The City Treasurer is a high-ranking cabinet-level member of the administration who's charged with management responsibility over PWD indebtedness and cannot satisfy this legal standard. An independent authority for utility ratemaking is essential to ensuring that Water Department claims for higher rates are subjected to thorough and diligent examination and review by decision-makers who are required to act with impartiality. Although the Treasurer may possess the professional qualifications that would be desirable in a board member, and of course, this testimony is not personal as I've only just met the City Treasurer moments ago, it is by virtue of her position that I do not believe she can serve on this board. I respectfully urge the members of the Committee of the Hold to vote no to the appointment of the City Treasurer. That's Resolution 140984. Thank you, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your testimony, any questions of this witness, both members of the committee? There being none, thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we will have Ms. Amy Curlin. Good morning.
Good morning, President Clark and members of City Council. I am Amy Curlin, the Inspector General for the City of Philadelphia, and I'm very pleased to appear before you today regarding my application for appointment to the PHA Board. I have served the city as Inspector General since January of 2008. As you know, my office's mission is to boost public confidence in city government by rooting out fraud, corruption, misconduct, waste and mismanagement. During my time in office, the Inspector General's office has saved or recovered for the city over $34 million and conducted more than 1,000 investigations as a result of our commitment to preventing fraud and corruption by city employees and businesses with city contracts. I am certain that PHA faces some of the same issues that I deal with on a daily basis, and I believe having an experienced watchdog on its board would help the agency. I care deeply about the city and its residents, and I believe my desire to make the city a better place for its residents and my skills as Inspector General make me a good candidate for PHA Board. I thank you for the opportunity to testify, I look forward to helping to support and govern PHA, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Any questions? Anyone else here to testify on any of these resolutions? There being none, thank you all very much. This concludes the public hearing. On the Committee to Hold, we will now go into the public meeting. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a single motion on the six resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move that Resolutions Number 140984, 140985, 140986, 140987 and 140988, along with 150016, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second, that Resolutions Number 140984, 140985, 140986, 140987, 140988 and 150016 be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries, and the resolution will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation at the next session of council. This concludes our business for today, thank you all very much. I ask councilmembers to please go over to the caucus so we can conduct our caucus meeting. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Hours come, we have a quorum, I'd ask all guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail. The members will take their seat, we will get started. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Donald D. Moore, Senior Pastor of Mount Carmel Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Curtis Jones. Would every, all guests and visitors, please rise.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you for this day. Lord, I come praying for our mayor as he continues to lead and direct this city. Lord, we now enter collectively in prayer, asking for your continued love and guidance as these elected officials assemble here on today to conduct the matters of the City of Philadelphia. We come seeking your blessing on the tasks that are before them as they navigate through the process of making decisions. And Lord, we ask that you will walk with them as they walk among your people. Grant each member represented here clear insight, deliberation and wisdom as they make balanced and impartial choices that will impact the day-to-day lives of the residents and those who work in the city. Equip this council with the eyes and hearts for humanity, to know that at the end of every meeting and political decision is a human being that is depending on this council to act wisely, humbly and justly. Oh God, I ask that you give this council members a sympathetic ear to hear and listen to the voices of those marginalized in the city, and I ask that this body of officials become the voice to make a difference. Lord, I conclude this prayer by requesting that you continue to transform, heal and make a difference in this city through this council. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for those inspiring words. And the next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 22nd, 2015. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenley for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 22nd, 2015, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of January 22nd, 2015. Stand and approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Thank you. Chair recognizes...thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day today to come down and witness your government in action. We hope that your experience today is a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you very much. There will be some level of history made today, so you can say, when you go home, I was there. So thank you very much. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution honoring Ready, Willing, and Able with Jason Miller. And those accompanying him, please join the councilmen at the podium. And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilman Greenley, Councilman Good, Councilman Kenny, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Johnson. And Councilwoman Blackwell.
So, as a freshman, and we age in animal years up here because of the intensity of the work, a kind councilman told me about protocol. His name was Councilman Kenny. He turned around and said how things are done in these chambers. So recognizing that Ready, Willing, and Able is in Councilman Johnson's district, I will yield the podium so he can say a few words to start us off about this resolution.
Sure. I'm going to then give it to... Wow. Good morning, everyone. I am truly honored and privileged to have this opportunity to present this citation and resolution to an organization that does outstanding work here in the City of Philadelphia. My grandmother liked to call them the men in the blue suits, working throughout South Philadelphia as well as the City of Philadelphia as a whole. But what makes these guys unique is that these are individuals who are taking the opportunity to not only make the City of Philadelphia a great city, but also taking the time to improve the quality of their lives. And so I'm just honored and privileged that they are here with us. I've had the opportunity to come down and visit their headquarters in the great district of the Second Councilmanate District in South Philadelphia, and I've always been inspired by the work that they have done. And so let's just say thank you for being here, and we'll get started with the resolution. Thank you, Councilman Curtis Jones.
And you're right, no one cares more about homeless people than Councilwoman Janie Blackwell. But what I want to say here today about this is that over two decades ago, the Center City District was formed, and it was designed to take people and give them dignity in the work of keeping our city straight in the Center City area. Some 20 programs later, there are Special Services District in and around Philadelphia. I had the opportunity to see President Councilman Clark's rendition of the Center City District in North Philly. But these gentlemen are unique in this way, that they have come from a different path, that many of them have been homeless, and many of them have been incarcerated, and many of them have suffered some of the slings and arrows that life sometimes puts on us as individuals, and in particular, urban men. And a national study shows that if you are homeless for more than five years, that your life expectancy is cut by 20. That if you wind up homeless for more than five years, that you can be anticipated to have a shorter lifespan. So for these young men to be back on track, we are pleased and proud to have the men in blue doing their thing throughout the city. So we are going to honor them today, and we honor and celebrate Ready, Willing, and Able for helping hundreds of men overcome poverty, addiction, crime, to become productive, contributing members of our community, responsible fathers to their children in the city of brotherly love by providing resources to men such as transitional housing, recovery services, life skills, and living wage employment that promotes healthy households and responsible fatherhood.
Whereas Ready, Willing, and Able, RWA, is an organization dedicated to providing a hand up rather than a handout by assisting homeless men who demonstrate a commitment to becoming self-sufficient and living healthier lifestyles, and...
Whereas Ready, Willing, and Able was established by the Doe Fund with a mission to help the homeless lead independent, productive lives. Ready, Willing, and Able expanded programming to respond to the specific needs of difficult-to-employ populations, including recent parolees, homeless individuals living with HIV/AIDS, homeless veterans, and low-income individuals and families.
And whereas Ready, Willing, and Able works with Philadelphians facing serious social and economic barriers. 100% are homeless. Nearly 70% of Ready, Willing, and Able trainees have incarceration histories of five years or more. 96% have a history of drug or alcohol abuse, and 36% do not have a high school diploma or a GED, and...
Whereas to solve homelessness for a night, you need shelter. To solve homelessness for good, you need work. Since Ready, Willing, and Able launched, it has used paid transitional work and a holistic individualized service package to catapult hundreds of men over difficult social and economic barriers into the workforce and out of the cycles of homelessness, crime,
And whereas RWA helps develop practical life skills in men by providing rehabilitative services, vocational training, adult basic education, social support services, including conflict resolution, parenting, and financial management classes, as well as lifelong graduate services, and...
Whereas Ready, Willing, and Able combats recidivism and homelessness through career development classes, covering topics such as identification of occupational aptitudes and interests, job searching, resume preparation, and interview skills. RWA provides occupational training opportunities such as commercial driving, culinary arts, energy-efficient building maintenance, pest control, security, and supervisor-in-training programs. Job readiness and placement services are available.
Whereas driven by the simple premise that work works, RWA honors its trainees by providing a blue uniform during assigned hours that distinguishes them as a group of community members, notably known as the men in blue, and...
Whereas RWA provides a great deal of services to its community with its assistance, particularly in the fourth district on District Day and a community cleanup. Now therefore be it. Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor Ready, Willing, and Able for its outstanding efforts helping hundreds of men overcome poverty, addiction, crime, to become productive, contributing members of our community and responsible fathers to their children in the city of brotherly love by providing resources to men such as transitional housing, recovery services, life skills, and living wage employment that promotes healthy households and responsible fathers. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Jeffrey Stubbs, Director of Administration, and Mr. Wills, and Senior...Ms. Will, sorry, Housing Manager, and Jason Miller, Program Director from the 36th Ward. And Ready, Willing, and Able Philadelphia as evidence of our sincere sentiments of this entire legislative body, signed by all members of council.
Chair recognizes Mr. Miller for remarks.
Good morning, everyone. I'm the Executive Director at Ready, Willing, and Able, and I just want to thank everyone for this. It means more than you can ever know. The six guys that are up here, if you would have asked them where they were a year ago that they'd be standing right here, they wouldn't have been able to say this is possible. The opportunities that our program provides are not about me, it's not about our staff, it's about the men choosing to grow their opportunities, choosing to go out and figure out a new path for themselves. We always talk about, you've got to be a leader, and you have to be able to understand that everybody's watching at all times. That's why they wear the blue uniform. They're in all of your districts in some way, shape, or form. Hopefully, we can grow that in the future, but they're out there, and they're being neighbors, and they're being fathers, and they're being a part of all this because they're going to go back and live in all these neighborhoods. These are your brothers. So thank you. We will give this to all 60...oh, excuse me, all 70 of the men in the program and let them know that they're doing a good job. So thank you.
Council will be at ease.
The next order of business is communications.
Thank you. The next order of business is communications. The chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Thank you, Mr. Decker. Would you please read those messages?
To the President, members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Code Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 140969, 140971, 141030, and 141031. All under certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Decker, do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilman...Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one resolution.
A non-privileged resolution also naming Seventh Street from Girard Avenue to Popular Street as Reverend Martha A. Lang Drive.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasco.
Mr. President, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have six privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Two bills. Thank you.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Monroe Street, 17th Street, Carpenter Street, and 18th Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance permitting Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Codex out of wage and net profits tax to provide a tax credit and refund of excess taxes paid for certain low-income taxpayers whose children are enrolled in qualified early childhood education or care programs.
That bill will also be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Yaz, the greatest for his positive contributions to pop culture as a rapper and actor, as well as his recent successful performance in the television show Empire.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending the Reverend Dr. Napoleon Livingston Divine, an ordained Baptist minister for his devotion to his community and the people of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending Dr. Don Capia Dennis for his devotion to his laborian community and the people of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution commemorating the 42nd anniversary of the landmark United States Supreme Court decision Roe versus Wade.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring coded by kids on their commitment to educating Philadelphia's next generation of STEM leaders.
That resolution will be on this week's final passage calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One privilege and one non-privileged resolution, one co-sponsored by Kenny Heenan, Nielsen and Squilla, and the other by Wilson Good and Blondell Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring and celebrating the Philadelphia Mummies Mardi Gras in Mannionka Parade to be held on February 22, 2015 on Main Street in the 4th Councilman and District of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming West Burke Street between North 54th Street and North 56th Street as Nelson Williams Way, memorializing the dedicated service of Nihan Williams Sr. to the Winfield community and his tireless advocacy on behalf of at-risk youth.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing Thomas Jennifer's University to construct and maintain lighted bollard right-of-way encroachments within the public right-of-way of 1008 Locust Street and an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Christian Street and Lilth Street, Cross Street and Tenth Street, Queen Street and Front Street, Moore Street and 12th Street, Water Street and Washington Avenue, Fitzgerald Street and 11th Street, Clarence Street and Porter Street, and an ordinance amending Subcode A of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code by amending Chapter 3 entitled Permits entitled 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades and Professions by amending Chapter 9200 entitled Commercial Activities on Streets to add and exemption, add definitions and provide for the use and regulation of mobile food vendors in certain areas, and an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by providing for the use and regulation of mobile food vendors, amending Chapter 9200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commercial Activities on Streets by revising certain provisions and adding definitions to provide for mobile food vendors, making conforming amendments to other provisions of the Philadelphia Code and making technical changes.
Thank you. Those four bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled serving city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the first, 25th and 31st wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled serving city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 1st, 25th and 31st wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Comack Street, both sides, Chu Avenue to Alney Avenue, Church Lane, East Side, Ogans Avenue to Limeell Pike, West Morland Street, both sides, 16th Street to 17th Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Carlisle Street and West Morland Street, Evergreen Avenue and Artley Street, Evergreen Avenue and Anderson Street, Schoolhouse Lane and Germantown Avenue, Graves Lane and Germantown Avenue, Sidenham Street and Tioga Street.
That bill will also be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two resolutions. One is privileged, one on your behalf is non-privileged. I wish to be recognized after the title of the resolution introduced on your behalf is read for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the 2014 winners of PHL Live Center Stage.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on energy opportunities for Philadelphia to continue to investigate the potential to establish the city of Philadelphia and the region as an energy hub.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and the next order of business is report on the committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee of the Whole reports six resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring coded by kids on their commitment to educating Philadelphia's next generation of STEM leaders.
That resolution will be on this week's final passage calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two resolutions. One is privileged, one on your behalf is non-privileged. I wish to be recognized after the title of the resolution introduced on your behalf is read for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the 2014 winners of PHL Live Center Stage.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on energy opportunities for Philadelphia to continue to investigate the potential to establish the city of Philadelphia and the region as an energy hub.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and the next order of business is report on the committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee of the Whole reports six resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia. The committee of the whole, which has referred Resolution Number 140984 entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Nancy Winkler to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution Number 140985 entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Bernard Bronwasser to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution Number 140986 entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Sonny Popowski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution Number 140987 entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Lee Huang to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution Number 140988 entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Micah Chapman to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution Number 150016 entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Amy L. Kirland to be a member of the Philadelphia Housing Authority. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. These resolutions will be placed on our final passage calendar at our next session of council, and the chair now recognizes Councilman Greenley for a report to the Committee of Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Law and Government, which has referred Bill Number 140904 entitled an ordinance amending various sections of Title IX entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades and Professions and Title X entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity of the Philadelphia Code to provide for suspension of their effectiveness pending state authorizing legislation. And Bill Number 15001 entitled and ordinance amending Chapter 172100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Conflicts Council Contracts by requiring that certain city contracts dealing with the provision of services for indigent legal defense may only be made when permitted by ordinance where the contractor is of the Defender Association of Philadelphia, the Support Center for Child Advocates or community legal services. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 140904 and 15001, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and this will, bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Good for a report from the Committee of Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports one bill favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Decker, please read the report. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, which has referred Bill Number 141028 entitled and ordinance amending subsection 192604, subparagraph 6 of the Philadelphia Code, under which businesses that enter into agreements to make contributions to community development corporations and certain other organizations receive credits against business income and receives taxes by changing the annual contribution amount required to receive the credit and the annual amount of the credit, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 141028.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to allow first reading this day of Bills Number 140904 and 15001. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and we will now have consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of, the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and they will be on our second reading and final passage calendar next, next week. There are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up the resolutions and bills on a second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The following resolution and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 150015, 150018, 150019, 150021, 150038, 150041, 140831A. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on a final passage calendar, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. There will be a podium in the middle of the council chambers. If your name, if anyone has not already signed up, or you're interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, you may sign up at the table to my left. Your name will be called. You will be given three minutes to testify on a bill or resolution that's on the final passage calendar. On the table, you will see a device. When the light turns green, it is your time to testify. When it turns yellow, you have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when it turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please read the first name on the list.
There are no, no speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
All right. Quite a long speech. It's called filler. Thank you so much. All right. We will now move towards our calendar. And Mr. Decker, please read 150015.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to swiftly pass legislation establishing regulations for transportation network companies that include the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
I approve the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150015 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150018.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled serving city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 31st ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150021 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150021.
A resolution amending Resolution Number 140528 approving the annual program statement and budget for the expenditure of the Neighborhood Transformation Initiative NTI bond proceeds for fiscal year 2015.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Can I move for the adoption of the resolution?
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150038 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150038.
A resolution amending Resolution Number 140528 approving the annual program statement and budget for the expenditure of the Neighborhood Transformation Initiative NTI bond proceeds for fiscal year 2015.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Can I move for the adoption of the resolution?
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150038 is adopted. 150019, Mr. Decker.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses is 1905, 1907, 1909, 1911, 1913, 1915 and 1917 Turner Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150019 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150021.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled serving city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 36th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150021 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150038.
A resolution amending Resolution Number 140528 approving the annual program statement and budget for the expenditure of the Neighborhood Transformation Initiative NTI bond proceeds for fiscal year 2015.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Can I move for the adoption of the resolution?
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150038 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150041.
A resolution expressing city council support for Mohamed Gulab, the hero who saved U.S. Navy SEAL Marcus Luttrell, and urging that the United States Department of Homeland Security offer Gulab and his family political asylum in the United States.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150041 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140831A.
And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising regulations relating to home occupations, making conforming amendments to other provisions of Title 14 and making technical changes.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call or roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenley, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil.
He said, he said aye.
Councilman O, Councilwoman Kona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140892A.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 93900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability by reorganizing the provisions of that chapter into separate provisions for rental licenses, vacant lot licenses, vacant structure licenses and vacant waterfront structure licenses.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call or roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenley, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Kona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring Yaz, the greatest for his positive contributions to pop culture in, as a rapper and actor, as well as his recent successful performance in the television show Empire introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, that resolution is also sponsored by Councilman Curtis Jones, a young man of hails from Overbrook High School. I would like to move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution reorganizing and commending the Reverend Dr. Napoleon Livingston Divine, an ordained Baptist minister for his devotion to his community and the people of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I also move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing and commending Mr. Don Capia Dennis for his devotion to his librarian community and the people of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commemorating the 42nd anniversary of the landmark United States Supreme Court decision Roe versus Wade introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing and commending the greater Philadelphia health action Inc. for its devotion to providing the people of Philadelphia with quality medical, dental, behavioral health, pharmacy and child development services introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commemorating, commemorating the 70th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz concentration and extermination camp in Poland during World War II on January 27, 1945 and recognizing International Holocaust Remembrance Day introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring coded by kids on their commitment to educating Philadelphia's next generation of STEM leaders introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak on this resolution very briefly.
Please do.
Little-known fact, Sylvester Mobley, if you would please stand, this is an opportunity to simply lift up young people who are trying to make a difference for young people in the world of STEM. the world of STEM. Fact, 4% of unemployment software developers in the United States are African-American. 5% are Hispanic, and 29% are Asian. By 2018, there will be nearly three times as many job openings requiring computer science knowledge than qualified applicants. By 2018, there will be nearly three times as many job openings requiring computer science knowledge than qualified applicants. Coded by Kids started with one instructor and three students two years ago, and two years later, it has 14 instructors and 40 to 50 students learning every year about STEM. I move for the adoption, Mr. President.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the Philadelphia Mummer's Mardi Gras in Manayunk Parade to be held on February 22, 2015 on Main Street in the 4th Councilmanate District of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
On behalf of the ultimate mummer, Councilman Kenny, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and properly second by the two mummers in the council chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the 2014 winners of PHL Live Center Stage introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on energy opportunities for Philadelphia to continue to investigate the potential to establish the City of Philadelphia and the region as an energy hub introduced by Councilman O on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. On your behalf, I move for the option of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm fortunate to be in the minority because I get to be the first to wish Councilman Kenny congratulations and good luck, and to appreciate, you know, his 23 years of service, whether people agree or disagree with some of the things he's done. He's done it passionately and with, you know, his, the public's best interests at heart, and I think it's wonderful for him to take this step to pursue something he's wanted to pursue. And as I read his quote, he doesn't want to kind of let this moment go by him, and I think that's to be commended, and best of luck to you.
Thank you very much. Any speeches on the part of the majority? And chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Cool first. Wow. That's a first.
Quick on the draw, sir.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Just one, I want to just speak briefly on the bill that I introduced today to rezone a parcel of green space that will be the future of the Carpenter Green Park on the 17th and Carpenter in the southwest center city part of my district. The park will be known as Carpenter Green. It has been spearheaded by the South of South Neighbors Association. We rezone the park from commercial space to actual, from residential. It is currently residential and commercially zoned now for green space, and it's going to be a green park sponsored by South of South Neighbors Association. But particularly, I just want to salute Ms. Lauren Vitas for heading this effort to make sure that that part of my district has a level of green space which recently didn't have. So I just want to acknowledge her for her hard work and dedication. I also just want to acknowledge my colleague as well, as he go off into his endeavors on Councilman Kenny, who served as one of my professors at the University of Pennsylvania, fellow center of government so many moons ago. And when I was just a young student getting involved in politics, he was a good adjunct professor, and so I just want to acknowledge him, his hard work and his dedication to this body as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join with everyone here in wishing Councilman Kenny the best of luck in the future. And I had a kid him today. I say I'm amazed at the lengths some people will go not to have to vote for paid sick leave.
Ah.
I mean, it's amazing, you know?
Ah.
But I think it's okay to put on record. He did tell me that he would have voted for it.
All right.
Okay, there you go. But on a personal note, I just want to first thank him for, as the many years I was a staff member here for always being nice to me. I'm sure it had nothing to do that I was a ward leader. And also, I'm getting to that. And also, once I got here, along with Councilman O'Neal, we made up the St. Joe Prep Caucus, and he was always very helpful to me as I got my legs in this place. So, and also as a citizen, I just think we all owe him a debt of gratitude for all the hard work he did in here and all the positive things he did for the City of Philadelphia. So I just want to say to him good luck and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had an opportunity to share that end of the chamber with my upperclassman, Councilman Kenny, and for the first like six months, he didn't speak to me. He wanted to make sure, he wanted to make sure I was meritorious of his commentary. But some of the, some of the things that you find out, the press sits over there, we're constantly under cameras, but some of the best comments, some of the best information happens in between these chairs and desks. And I've been fortunate over the first four years to share that end of the world with him, gaining his insight on matters helped me immensely as a freshman. He will be sorely missed by us. You may not always agree with him, but you always respected his perspective on public policy, and I thank him for that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I joined this legislative body in saying farewell to my friend. I need to see your eyeballs, Jim Kenny.
Oh.
That's the teacher in me. Farewell to my friend and legislative partner, because he and I have worked closely on a number of issues. The record should always reflect that it was Councilman James Kenny who crafted the idea that we should have a new committee on the environment and sustainability. So we should ever be thankful to him for that. And he loves the arts, and we both love hospitality and tourism in a big, 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 big way. And more recently, we've been great partners on LGBT-related issues. Secondly and lastly, I searched high and low for a quote I believe captures the essence of who he is.
Uh-oh.
I believe blue and white, and so does Jim Kenny when it comes to Penn State. So, Joe Paterno said, and I quote, "Play as hard as you can. Don't be stupid. Pay attention to details, and have enough guts in the clutch that you're not afraid to make a play." This was Jim Kenny on a lot of issues right here in Philadelphia City Council. So we thank you and we salute you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. 23 years of service, Jimmy. I want to congratulate you with that. And, you know, as I recall, you know, you've been in the forefront of some of the most pressing issues that this city has been faced with, you know, through the good times and through the not-so-good times with our economy. And you definitely stood up when it wasn't necessarily, you know, an easy thing to do. So, you know, I want to give you a lot of credit for that, you know, from education, working families, to the underground economy, you know, and making sure that our taxes are trying to be collected so we can, you know, focus in on our core, core services to the city, you know. And, you know, we haven't always agreed politically, as you well know, and sometimes, you know, there hasn't been an agreement in this body, you know, but you were able to disagree with civilian and find common ground. And I guarantee you're going to take that wherever you go in your future endeavors. And, you know, I don't know if you realize how far we go back. You know, I was at Apprentice working on your first campaign, you know, with Local 98 as, you know, a little, little political minion going around and speaking with, with the general public, you know, but, you know, from there and the birth of your daughter, we were standing in line, and I congratulated you, we were at the bank in Center City, to, you know, being on the inside of this rail, which is totally different than being on the outside of this rail. And, you know, your advice when I needed it and to bounce things off, I'll never forget, you know, as a friendly hand. And most important, you told me not to get into a disagreement inside this body. So I wish you luck. We're going to miss your wit, your comedy.
Ah.
We're going to miss your wit and comedy in this body at the appropriate times when we need a little sense of humor. So good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, no, Council, hold on, hold on. We got more. Don't be that anxious to get out of this body, sir. Ah, we've got a couple of more. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to speak briefly, and I'll mention it around some of the, the school district's position on the testing and the parents and the teachers of Feltonville Sciences. This body held hearings. Thanks to Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilman Squilla who brought this to our attention. It is my understanding that the school district is going to put together a huge delegation to investigate these teachers and these parents. The school district's going to come before us soon and ask us for some additional resources as they have in the last four years, and as we've tried to provide and we all know they needed. Wasting time on a witch hunt for folks who are not being defiant but just really frustrated at the lack of funding for children of special needs and English language learners is important, and parents have a right to opt out. So I asked the school district to focus in on working with the Secretary of Education and looking at how we opt out of Keystone exams altogether, as opposed to looking to reprimand teachers and parents for exercising their rights. And speaking of language learners, I don't think there's a stronger advocate for immigration than Councilman Kenny. And in this council, he has been steadfast and focused in providing a different view as to the importance that immigrants have, the important role that immigrants pay in the City of Philadelphia. I've joined him at many meetings, and he has always been incredibly eloquent in reminding people that everybody got here on some sort of boot. And I really, really appreciate it because it's not always been popular. I get tons of emails. I can just imagine the types of emails that he gets on the issue, and he's never wavered on, and the many progressive issues that he's pursued in this council. So I want to thank him for his service. When I first sat here, Jim Kenny would look over here, Councilman Kenny, and he didn't always have a smile on his face. And it took me a while to understand it wasn't at me.